Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, December 20, 2023, a regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you today in this meeting, and we thank you for who you are, and we just give you thanks this morning. And right now, we also lift up the people that have retired here with Hillsborough County in November, James L. Warmack, who served 26 years, and we just thank you for his life. We bless his life. And Chief Jones also, who's retired, we just pray for him. He has served faithfully for many years, putting his life on the line for others, serving his fellow man. And we just thank you for all that he's done, and we thank you, that we ask you to bless them, Lord, with long and healthy lives, Lord, and that they just continue, Lord, to bless them. They'll have, enjoy and have great times, Lord, of blessing as they continue on, Lord. We thank you for that. And we just pray also for all the firefighters, all law enforcement, all first responders, and all of our military. We pray for their protection over their lives, and we ask you to lead them and guide them to safety in all that they do. And we thank you, and we ask you to bless this meeting, and we ask you to bless everyone in Hillsborough County with health and prosperity in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. Commissioner Kemp will be participating virtually this morning, so if we could have a roll call vote.
Karen Hagan.
Here.
Cameron Sapata.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Wostol.
Here.
You have a form, sir.
All right, thank you. We have one very special accommodation to present this morning, and that will be by
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, what a bittersweet day today in Hillsborough County, isn't it? I want to thank everybody for being here. First, I want to have, if Chief Jones, you could please come up to the front. Chief Doherty, please come to the front. I see our sheriff just walked in. Sheriff, you can keep on walking and head this way. Keith Chapman as well. And something a little abnormal, I'm going to ask Bonnie Wise, please, if you would come over here as well. And I think Chief Tripp is here. Chief, are you here? Come on up. Well, good morning and welcome. It's a tremendous honor to make this presentation today. Before we begin, I want to recognize first members of Chief Jones' staff who are senior staff who are here in the audience today. Would you all please stand up? Please give them a round of applause. Thank you. The Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Chief Jones is a transformational leader who dedicated more than 45 years of service to this community, fire service, and emergency management. For Chief Jones, it's all about people, the first responders and the emergency management staff who serve Hillsborough County residents daily and the residents they protect. Chief Jones has a degree in fire science from Columbia Southern University and is a fire training instructor at the Florida State Fire College and state-certified paramedic. He is driven to support, build, and mentor veteran firefighters and those just beginning their careers. He accomplished this in numerous ways, especially by creating programs to improve the quality of life for all first responders. Further, Chief Jones has inspired new generations to pursue the fire service as a career, developing new talent and increasing the appeal of this line of work. His vast accomplishments have made this county and its first responders safer, and that is a tremendous legacy. And personally, I just want to say, Chief Jones, he's been somewhat of a mentor to me. You know, I think today's the day we should have parades, and there should be the Goodyear Blimp flying over with his name, but that's just not his style. Chief Jones is all about people. He's about integrity. He's about putting other peoples first, especially his first responders and the people that he represents. You know, my personal experience with him and folks like Pep and the Brotherhood of the Firefighters, I'm not one of them, but I grew up with folks that are now firefighters, and I got to say, I feel like one of you all. Even though I'm not capable of running into a burning building, I understand the Brotherhood and the love that you have for each other. I also want to call up Catherine. Would you please come up to the front real quick? Now, with our first responders, you all sign up for this. You all sign up to risk your lives every day for complete strangers. The people that don't necessarily sign up for this are your spouses. And for that, Catherine, we want to tell you, because I know that we borrowed him a lot longer than we thought, Bonnie's going to allude to this in a little bit, but we kind of tricked him to become our fire chief. And I know, Catherine, that you all have put your life on hold, and you personally have put your life on hold to allow him to continue to serve the people of Hillsborough County. So we want to present you with these flowers to thank you for your service for allowing So Chief Jones, could you come up front here real quick? I want to read an official accommodation here that we have right here. "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to congratulate Chief Dennis Jones on his retirement as the sixth chief in the 50-year history of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, the culmination of an outstanding career that transformed the fire service in Hillsborough County. A person of integrity, fortitude, and compassion, Chief Jones dedicated well over half his life to protecting the residents of Hillsborough County. Coming out of retirement to lead Hillsborough County Fire Rescue in 2015 after more than three decades with the Tampa Fire Rescue, including five years as fire chief, Chief Jones is an inspirational leader. Under his direction, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue has become a model for the state and the southeast. He developed quick-response squads to help reduce the stresses of increased calls. He oversaw the addition of three new stations," and he reminds me, "we need another 24 every day," "and numerous rebuilt facilities, 12 advanced life-support ambulances, and the opening of the Public Safety Operation Complex. The Summer Youth Fire Academy, Cadet Program, and Fire Academy were either instituted or further developed during his tenure, introducing new generations to fire service. An innovator, Chief Jones is a founding member of the Florida Task Force Three, an urban search-and-rescue team of highly skilled firefighters from Hillsborough County, Tampa, and St. Petersburg that has deployed statewide and nationally. It is for these accomplishments and numerous others that the Florida Fire Chiefs Association named Chief Jones the Florida Career Fire Chief of the Year in 2023, a richly deserved honor." So not only is he our chief, he is the state of Florida's chief. "The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Chief Dennis Jones for his devotion to public safety, leadership, tireless service, and wishes him all the best in the next chapter of his life, awarded this 20th day of December, 2023." All right, so we have some really special guests with us. Not only are we blessed to have the best fire chief in the state, we also have the best sheriff in the state of Florida, Sheriff Chad Cronister. And I also want to say, because this is a rarity, where you have the fire chief, or both fire chiefs, Cronister, Tripp, and our Bonnie Wise right here, these are the toughest jobs in the county. Politicians come and go. We get elected, sometimes they get elected, and you're like, how in the world is that person an elected politician? There is no room for error with these jobs right here, correct? This is public safety. Bonnie manages 5,200 employees. These jobs are the most critical in Hillsborough County, and we are so thankful to have our sheriff, correct? So without further ado, let me introduce Sheriff Chad Cronister.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Commissioner Owen, distinguished board, for inviting and including me in such a special ceremony. As you can imagine, being 4,000 strong at the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, we have a ton of community partnerships that we share. But I assure you, there is none that is larger, more important, or more critical than the one we share with the men and women of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. It is amazing and an honor to stand shoulder to shoulder on a daily basis with the incredible men and women of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue as we respond to calls for service, emergencies, and even tragedies. Over the last several years, and especially the last six, as serving as your sheriff, I've had a front-row seat in watching this innovative leader, Chief Jones, and his command staff create one of the most professional, one of the most efficient, and one of the most reputable fire departments in the state of Florida. On a personal note, 32 years ago, my CPR instructor in the academy was Chief Jones. Yeah, you should clap, because I don't know how I passed it. But there are times where we bring individuals in, and they're able to be recognized for a career of service. And then there are individuals who dedicate their entire life to public service. Chief Jones, you're one of those selfless servants who have moved the needle in our county. I wish you all of God's blessings as you start the next chapter in life. Merry Christmas. God bless everyone.
Thank you, Sheriff. And next, we want to introduce a very special friend of Chief Jones, Chief Chapman, former Temple Terrace Fire Chief. Chief?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to say a few words. I'm honored to be here for Chief Jones. Known Chief Jones for many years and in a lot of different capacities, certainly have not had the opportunity to work for him directly, but served on many committees and worked on many projects over the years. But I've had an opportunity to witness the effectiveness of his leadership day in and day out. And, you know, leaders are a dime a dozen, and occasionally you'll come across a leader that is effective in moving an organization and the people within that organization forward. More rare is to find a leader that's effective in that nature, but cares more about the people that are around him than the accolades that he receives himself. And then more rare than that is someone who can institute that leadership in multiple organizations, as Chief Jones has done over the years. John Maxwell describes levels of leadership, and the top level is a pinnacle level of leadership. Some of you guys know that. Some people call it legacy. In that level of leadership, which most aspire to achieve, people don't follow you just because of what your accomplishments are. They follow you because of who you are and what you stand for. And for decades, Chief Jones has exercised that leadership and has influenced not only Hillsborough County, the state of Florida, but I would suggest even the fire service in our nation as a whole. So it is with great honor today that I stand here and say, well done, Chief Jones. Congratulations on your retirement, and let's make it a real one this time.
So well said. Next, I want to call up our leader here in the county, and I sure hope she can make it through this today, because they have a really special relationship, and I sure hope she talks about how she tricked Chief Jones to becoming our fire chief. So Bonnie Wise.
Thank you, Commissioner Owen, and thank you to the board, and I will try to keep this short, so I don't have Commissioner Hagan sending daggers my way here. So Chief Jones and I have known each other for 20 years. We were both at the city of Tampa at the same time, and as you have heard, he is a man of honor, a man of integrity, and a man of faith, and a man of family. And I got to know him then, and we became friends, and so more than that, he became my friend. So we both, you know, Chief Jones retired from the city of Tampa, and I came over to Hillsborough County. And then we were looking for a new fire chief here in 2015. And so Greg Horredell and I were both on the executive team at the time, under Mike Merrill's leadership, and we were talking about the characteristics we wanted in our next fire chief. And I said, I have the right person for us, but he is retired. So Greg and I scheduled a lunch with Chief Jones, and we met over at the Yummy House, so that some of you know, that's kind of my meeting place. And we were meeting for lunch, and he was meeting his old friend, and he was meeting Greg, who they knew a little bit. And we met for lunch, and we were talking about Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. We heard about all the things he was doing, he was teaching, he was working with his family, he was doing his honey-do list, he was enjoying his retirement. And so Greg and I talked about what we were looking for in Hillsborough County and how we had such a great department, but we knew with his leadership, it could be even better. And so at that lunch, we offered him the job of fire chief. I have not seen Chief Jones surprised and unprepared very often. That, however, was one of the times. He was, of course, his normal self and humbled, but he did say two things. The first thing he said was, what's your plan B? And we admitted, we did not have one. But the second thing he said is, I have to speak to my wife about this. And he did. And so a few days later, he did later text me and then call me, and we spoke over the weekend, and he did, of course, accept the position. So I couldn't be more proud. Who knew that we would both be standing in our, you know, spots today when we met 20 years ago? So there are people in your life, you meet so many along the way, and everyone has an impact on you, but there are people who really leave a special place and help make you become a better person for having known them. And for me, Chief Jones is that person.
Thank you, Bonnie. Well said. So last, you know, I'm a Florida Gator football fan. I know it's a tough, tough year, but I always wonder what it's like whenever Tim Tebow left for the next quarterbacks to come along, right? That's kind of the situation our next guy is in right here, Chief Jason Doherty. But I can tell you, from knowing him a long time, I can't think of anyone that's better fit and more ready to do this job. So without further ado, your new chief, Chief Doherty.
Thank you, and thank you to the Commissioners, and thank you to the county administration. Thank you, Commissioner Owens. So I'm going to try to get through this the best I can. I'm going to apologize to Commissioner Hagan, it's going to probably take me more than a few minutes. I'm going to read a lot of this for, I'm going to have to read it, because I'm probably going to get emotional trying to get through this. Chief Jones has meant a tremendous amount to myself and my family over the years. I had the fortune of being Chief Jones' boss when he retired the first time. And when I say boss, he was mentoring me, obviously. So we've had a unique relationship, and I got to tell you, Chief, the last year or so, I've tried to distance myself from you somewhat intentionally, anticipating this day coming. So with that, I'm going to read through this. Chief's been through some challenging times with me. My father was probably the closest person I've ever been with. He passed away, Chief Jones was with me. I had a stroke about three years ago, a significant stroke. Most people probably here know that. Chief Jones stuck by my side, made sure I came back to work in about a week. So thank you much time off, but I think he did that intentionally, because he knew, you know, playing ball, you got to get back in the game. So I'm going to get through this, so please bear with me. Good morning, I'm Jason Doherty, our interim fire chief. It is truly an honor to share a few words about my mentor and friend, our fire chief, Dennis Jones. I will do my best not to get emotional, as today is a bittersweet for me personally. Chief Jones and I have worked side by side for the past 12 years. We have shared memories that will last a lifetime. I will begin with a quote today to honor what has become a tradition with Chief Jones. As our senior staff will tell you, Chief Jones will send us inspiring and lesson-learning quotes weekly. The quote I've chosen today, that I chose today, is from a legendary musical artist that Chief probably would not have picked. This artist is known as Snoop Dogg. "To be human is to be many things at once: strong and vulnerable, hard-headed and intellectual, courageous and afraid, loving and vengeful, revolutionary and old-school. Sometimes, as leaders, people forget we're still human. We are here today to celebrate the retirement of a legend in the fire service, one of the most prolific fire chiefs to ever serve in the state of Florida, and Florida's most recent fire chief of the year. I want to share with you a side of Chief Jones that many of you don't see. Chief Jones is and has been more than a fire chief. Though we always refer to him as Chief Jones, today I want to share a little bit about Dennis Jones, the son of Laverne Jones, a retired fire captain, Walter Jones, the brother of Walter and Shirley, a husband to his wife Catherine of more than 45 years, the proud father of three fantastic and successful children, Devon, Jennifer, and David, and a tremendously proud grandfather to Jericho and Justice, and a devoted man of faith. Though Chief Jones chose the fire service as his profession, I believe his passion has always been to teach others. The fire department and the church have become his classroom. I'm only one of thousands, and I mean thousands, and Sheriff Cronister alluded to this, that has been taught by Chief Jones over the last 45 years. I'm confident Chief Jones has trained more than three generations of firefighters and countless members of his congregation. Chief, I want to publicly thank you on behalf of every person you've ever taught and mentored for sharing your knowledge and experiences while educating us all over the years. Everything you did was with purpose. I know and believe your sole purpose was to both challenge and educate us to become better people and better leaders. I want to go back and share the lessons that you've taught me. One of the biggest lessons was what to create is our team's leadership foundation. So I'm going to tell you a quick little story. About eight years ago, the chief called me on a Friday afternoon. I was a training chief for Tampa Fire Rescue, and he had been the fire chief for the Hillsborough County for almost a year. Chief Jones asked me if I would be interested in joining his team as his deputy, one of his deputy chiefs. I was shocked, to say the least, and was at a loss for words. He would go on to say I should discuss the possibility with my wife for the weekend and get back with him on Monday with my decision. As I collected my thoughts, I decided to ask him for advice, seeing he had been my mentor for the last several years. I went on to ask him, what would he do if he were in the situation? Without hesitation, he said he would decline the offer if it were him, and then he said goodbye and hung up on me. I stood there puzzled, like I am now, and confused, with my phone in my hand. What was the purpose of Chief Jones calling me? To offer me a job to tell me not to accept it? As I said earlier, he always has a purpose. After thinking about our conversation, I immediately called him back and demanded that he tell me, why would he offer me a job and then advise me not to accept it? He quickly responded by telling me that I had asked him what he would do if it were him. He explained that he is not a risk-taker and is naturally conservative. He then went on to explain how he recognized the two of us were different in many ways. Ultimately, I was his ying to his yang. He then proceeded to tell me that his answer would have been different had I asked him what he recommended for me to accept the position. Reflecting on what he was telling me, I realized once again, there was a lesson to be learned. Number one, pay attention to detail. My question lacked detail. Number two, recognize the strengths of others and how their strengths can improve your weaknesses. Number three, surround yourself with others that think differently and are diverse in who they are and their thoughts. Four, provide guidance while encouraging others to seek solutions without giving them answers. And finally, have a purpose in everything you do. With his guidance, I made the right decision for myself and my family. I am so thankful to be here today and for the opportunity he provided me and the lessons that he bestowed on me and all of us and all the senior staff here today. These leadership lessons will continue moving our department forward as he departs for his retirement he so well deserves and has earned. I do believe faith brought us together. It indeed has been a blessing to be a part of your life, Chief. I will only admit this now, but behind closed doors, there were times, he may not have always agreed, or we may not have always agreed, but I never wavered from your direction when the final decision was made, because of my high respect and trust in you. I hope I was able to serve you as well as you have served all of us and the citizens of Hillsborough County. Over the years, we have undoubtedly seen the best and worst that the world can throw at us. But with your methodical leadership, we have triumphed as a department and as a community. As I look around this room full of outstanding leaders, I know each of you can truly appreciate the incredible journey he has had. Maybe I shouldn't say this for obvious reasons, but the truth is, I'm not sure there will ever be another fire chief that works as hard as you have, from being the first one to work to the last one to leave and attending everything in between. I know retirement will initially be the most challenging job you will ever have, but I also know you'll learn to embrace it with the same passion and energy that you've done as a fire chief. The next step in your life will bring you great joy and happiness, without a doubt. Please enjoy every second and know you will always be part of our team and the fire department family. Chief, I can speak for so many of us, but thank you for being a coach, mentor, role model, and most of all, our fire chief. In closing, I must provide you with one last quote by comedian Jean Parrott. I know your wonderful wife Catherine will generally appreciate this after 45 years of being married to you. Retirement, that's when you return from work one day and say, hi, honey, I'm home forever. So I got a plaque here for Chief Jones. It's simply states, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue presents the Dennis Jones Fire Chief, badge number 1413, for eight years of dedicated service and leadership. As a staff, we came together, and if you know Chief Jones, he's a little bit frugal, but he loves traditions. Every year, if you look at his Facebook, he does a turkey for, obviously, Thanksgiving and Christmas, puts it on a smoker that we've recently learned he bought at Lowe's on half price. So we came together and bought him one of these fancy pellet grills, because we know he would never go get one himself, and that was our gift to Chief Jones, because we know how much he enjoys breaking bread with folks and serving others. So thank you, Chief, and thank you for all the years that we've had together.
Thank you, Chief. Great job. Now, we got to invite the man of the hour to say a few words. I'd like to have your son come up here, too, stand next to him, if you come on forward. But Chief, again, as you can tell today, you mean so much to everybody, and without further ado, I want to introduce your chief and the state of Florida's fire chief, Chief
Wow. So those of you that know me, I don't like this kind of thing. Prefer to work in the background. I wrote some notes, but I was reminded, after all, hearing all this, I had a boss at one time, and she said, be bright, be brief, and be gone. So I do, Commissioner Owen, thank you for the entire Board of County Commissioners. It's been such an honor to serve here. I'm totally blessed. I do want to thank my beautiful wife for 45 years. She has put up with, you know, all my nonsense, and being gone, and even this morning, we had a room full of people, and I had to completely leave her in the corner. That's just a typical thing, but I just got to say, I could not have done it without my wife Catherine being beside me and behind me, and my family, Devon, Devon, who is following in the footsteps of the fire service, working for the city of Tampa. And I'm very fortunate to have my wife's parents, Don, Chief Master Sergeant, retired, Don Thompson, and his wife Sarah Jo, and we've been spending a lot of time together lately. But I do want to just say a couple of things. It's such an honor to receive a recognition like this, just as it was to be recognized as Fire Chief of the Year. I just feel unworthy of all of it. That... I just feel unworthy of all of it. For those of us that serve, that's not the reason we serve, but it's nice for your family to see that, it's nice for your coworkers to see that, and I am completely honored. I know that each of us seek meaning in life, we've all got special gifts and talents, and I can tell you that even though my dad was a fire captain in the city of Tampa, my whole life growing up, I had no intention of being a firefighter all the way through school until I got to college, and I was hating it and what I was pursuing, and my wife says, "What about the fire service?" And a light bulb went off, and when your, when your passion meets the opportunity, that's when everything works out. And I'm very thankful that I did find not my plan for my life, but God's plan for my life, and that is to serve others, and that means all people, all people. And I don't think the citizens of the city of Tampa, and especially the citizens of Hillsborough County, recognize the tremendous leadership team they have. There's so many directors, the county administrator, deputy county administrator, my boss, every leader that I've had the opportunity to work with in county government and city government is amazing, and they do it not for money, they do it because they want to serve the public. And the county is really very fortunate to have such outstanding leaders. If I had not had that lunch at Yummy House, I would not have had the opportunity. I remember talking to Bonnie and said, "If you would have told me it was an interview, I would have prepared for it." She said, "It wasn't an interview, it was an offer." And I had no idea that my wife would say yes, and she did say yes, she said, "You have to do that." But if I hadn't done that, I would not have had the opportunity to meet the second forward family. I've always had the forward family in my life in the fire service. I would not have had the opportunity to work with the over 1,000 phenomenal men and women of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. I would not have had the opportunity to work with this leadership team that's in front of you and Chief Dogerty. I'm going to tell you that Hillsborough County Fire Rescue is in good hands. The emergency management team that did a complete rebuild in the last few years, complete recycle, doubled in size, and are doing amazing things. Your Hillsborough County Fire Rescue is in very good hands going forward. I'm not worried one bit. My administrative assistant, Tracy, who's been by my side for the last several years, takes care of all those things, and her wonderful husband that makes sure IT is working 100% of the time. I'm going to stop because I can't call every name. There are literally thousands of people, but this is such a great place to work, and I just wish every citizen of Hillsborough County knew how amazing the men and women of Hillsborough County government and the city of Tampa are. I want to close by going back to what I said at the beginning. My plan in life was not to be in the fire service, but I'm very thankful that I found God's plan, and my personal life mission has been to love God, to love people, and to serve both. And I thank you again for this honor. It's very humbling.
Thank you, everybody. Sheriff Cronister, I told your wife one day, I said, "I wonder what you and Chief Jones do with all these plaques and awards that you all get." But thank you, Chief Jones, for those words. We're running a little short on time, but I do want to give my fellow Board of County Commissioners an opportunity if they want to say anything, so.
Commissioner Cohen. Thank you very much. It's hard to feel anything other than a deep sense of gratitude after a ceremony like this honoring you, Chief Jones, and your tremendous career. I would like to ask that the county administrator bring back to the board a recommendation for a major public facility of some kind, and we'll leave it up to our administration to be named in your honor in recognition of your tremendous contribution to both the city and to Hillsborough County, and we'll come back with that, I think, in the new year. So we'll see you again then. Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. Sorry that I couldn't be there with everyone this morning, but I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Jones. He's been the only fire chief I've worked with for the past seven years, and it's been, for me personally, a wonderful experience. But for Hillsborough County, we've heard so much about how meaningful and what great leadership there's been, so I just want to thank you for your excellent public service to all of Hillsborough County.
Commissioner Myers.
Chief, congratulations and thank you for your service. It has been a pleasure to work with you, particularly in our town hall meetings, so just thank you for looking out for the citizens of Hillsborough County.
Commissioner Cameron Spada.
I want to say thank you so much for your many years of service and really love what you said, and I know that you truly meant it from your heart, you know, that you love God and love all people, and that's how it should be, and I just thank you. I know that that is how you have lived your life, and I thank you so much for everything. Thank you.
I thank you, and I'll kind of wrap things up here, and I was going to say, Chief, I've been in this seat for a couple decades now, and I've seen many directors, administrators, sheriffs, chiefs, and CEOs retire, and I can honestly say that there's never been a ceremony and a turnout like this, and that is a testament to what a special man you are and how much you are loved and respected. It's been an honor to work with you through the years. As Sheriff Cronister said, you are an innovative leader that has transformed Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, and I just want to thank you for your leadership and everything you've done to protect Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa, and best of luck on your retirement.
All right, at this time, I'd like to have senior staff come up and family that can
Okay, Bonnie, want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, thank you. We have one off-the-agenda item. This is item B8. It'll be heard at 10:30. This is to approve the Form of the Declaration of Covenants and Land Use Restriction Agreement, otherwise known as the Lura, for compliance with the Live Local Act, LLA projects. Authorize the county administrator, days of need, to execute the Lura and to approve the LLA administrative approval and Lura process. We have a few items that have been deferred. The first one is item A8 is deferred to January 17. It is to approve 13 2023 Historic Preservation Challenge Grant Agreements. The next item that is deferred to January 17 is item A39. This to approve and execute the fiscal year 24 inter-local agreements regarding the distribution of public safety emergency communication system fee revenue. Item F3 by Commissioner Owen is being deferred to a date to be determined, to direct staff to start the design and construction of Triple Creek Boulevard extension. We have one revision to the agenda. This is item F4. This is Commissioner Owen's item. This will now be heard at 10:30. It is to direct staff to review and prepare recommendation changes to the land development code to enable the efficient implementation and administration of the Live Local Act, and to direct the county attorney's office to review the action taken by Pasco County regarding the act. There are several items for time certain. The first one is item D1 is the first public hearing at 10 o'clock. It is to hold the first public hearing to consider the deoption of an ordinance providing for the temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops within 500 feet of schools. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing to consider enactment of the proposed draft Hillsborough County State and National Background and Criminal History checks for prospective firefighter personnel ordinance. Item B2 at 10:15 is to accept the fire sprinkler contract audit performed by the county internal auditor's office. Item B8 at 10:30 is to approve the Form of the Declaration of Covenants and Restriction Land Use Restriction Agreements for compliance with the Live Local Act, and to execute the Lura, and to approve the LLA administrative approval and Lura process. Item F4, Commissioner Owen's item, at 10:30, to direct staff to review and prepare recommendable changes to the land development code to enable the efficient implementation and administration of the Live Local Act, and to direct the county attorney's office to review the action taken by Pasco County, and to bring back a report to the board. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Clear motion. Approve the changes.
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner, I think it was Kemp and Willstall. Please accord your vote on the changes.
Commissioner Kemp? Motion carried. Seven is.
All right, we'll go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from the citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to the board members, however it is requested. At the same time, when you address the board, the comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather the issues. We set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which the requests to speak have been received. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. First three speakers this morning are David Coleman, followed by Thomas Fletcher, and then Joe Alado.
Good morning. Good morning, Dave Coleman, Hillsborough County. There's a lot of good in this county. It's not the good that hurts us. When the red ship and the blue ship collide, we're all marooned. I like that one because it's true. There's a lot of that in this room, members looking for got-you moments and not-good governance. The shelters weren't open last night. We have 4,000 kids without addresses. My board plays to TECO, Mosaic, the Port Authority, and the FDOT more than its citizens. I think they mock how easy it is to pass their agendas. Why would you accept TECO sponsoring an awards dinner? The board doesn't really move to make meetings more accessible, advertised, hybrid, and recorded, despite the millions in the budget for that. We had 220 deaths and 7,450 hit-and-runs in Hillsborough last year, and if the numbers don't change, you're not doing your jobs. I showed you cities with more people and less money doing more, like Houston, reducing homelessness by 60%, mainly by coordinating all the various entry points and tracking cases. A1 and A2 have over $1 million in them. That Bayou Place I looked into, it says it only has five units left. They're $350,000 apiece. They need a 20 to 30K deposit. Where is specifically that $300,000 going? Please consider a county shelter next year. We are expanding the Selman with no study. Now you want a road through the ELAP land with no study. Listen to the guidance of our Sierra Club. Nancy knows what she's talking about. You spent four years and $65 million on three miles of road, making a lot of people angry, yet I don't see projects like West Waters and West Sly, a simple road restriping at lower limits, which would save lives now, be in schedule. My board continues to insult our gay community by not signing the Pride Proclamation, pulling $8 million from Hope and $1 million from Latinas, assuring our Jewish community of support while ignoring conservative hate bloggers against our Muslim community. When will we have invocations from all our representative communities? I asked for support for clean water amendment after being told I'd have to pay double for my water. I was told that water was, as if I wanted nice things like seven TVs in my house. It was absolutely ridiculous. I believe you raised my garbage bill. I'll find out in January. Again, all Hillsborough pays into our $9 billion budget. It seems ridiculous to shift all our energy into South and East County with talk of expanding the urban service area when there's nothing but complaints about growth and traffic issues from residents. Thank you. See you next year.
Thank you for your comments. Thomas Fletcher, followed by Joe Alado and Peter Horstman after that. Good morning.
Morning, commissioners. I'm Tom Fletcher, live at 10016 Kinder Drive in Riverview. I'm here today speaking on behalf of myself and Charlie Conover, the president of the Veteran Council of Hillsborough County. He was unable to attend today, but he wanted to give his support for implementing a countywide Veterans Advisory Board. He also wanted me to mention that last March, he informed Greg Hordell, Deputy Commander and County Administrator, that the council supports this initiative, and they're ready to help make the Veterans Advisory Board a huge success. Many council members believe that this effort will give you a new and important perspective of how diverse and pro-veteran Hillsborough County is at the grassroots level. Best of all, you will have the opportunity to see clearly how meaningful and important the veteran community is to the health and future of this great county. To me and many other council members, this is a masterful step county staff has brought to you to help implement the master plan for Veterans Memorial Park developed by the USF School of Agriculture. We also believe this board will have the opportunity to address other unmet needs of veterans in the community, and we are eager to get started working with the new Veterans Advisory Board. Again, commissioners, we want to thank you for your continued support for our veterans and their families.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Appreciate your comments. Joe Alado, followed by Peter Horstman.
Morning. Good morning, commissioners. By the way, great, great opportunity to be here for the retirement of Chief Jones. I'm here as ombudsman for the Veterans Council of Hillsborough County to express our thanks and support for the future Hillsborough County Veterans Advisory Board. Our members of various veteran service organizations look forward to new and improved programs to support and encourage our veteran community. By the way, it's the largest of any county in Florida. The Veterans Memorial Park and Museum really sets the mark for Florida, as evidenced by most recent improvements of B-26 Marauder replica, center stage in the World War II Memorial, new, brand-new stadium seating, yahoo, great, and sunshades, all well-received by the 500-plus crowd for Veterans Day, including a 97-year-old World War II veteran and a widow of a World War II B-26 Marauder pilot. Your project to expand the Veterans Resource Center is greatly appreciated and critical for the current veteran needs. Other areas to be considered in the future would include things like transitioning veterans' needs for employment and housing. Thank you again, commissioners, for your proactive attention to our veterans, and we look forward to fully supporting the mission. to fully supporting the mission of your newly-created Veterans Advisory Board. Warmest wishes for a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Merry Christmas as well. Next, Peter Horstman, followed by Brooke Ward, then Bretani Silveira. Is Peter here? And Peter hasn't checked in? Okay. Brooke Ward?
Good morning. Well, ho, 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 dear Commission, it's that time of year. My name is Brooke Ward, and I'm here to spread holiday cheer. As the weather gets colder and the bells chime with glee, let's talk about something that affects you and me. Merry Christmas to all and a Happy New Year. The ones making decisions, we hold you so dear. In Hillsborough County, where the sun shines bright, let's address some concerns. It's your duty and right. Our Rate Hikes Coalition with hearts full of glee wants to tackle energy bills and put families at ease. Like ornaments on a tree, we're united and bold. To alleviate the energy burden, make it a story to be told. Merry Christmas to all and a Happy New Year. To those shaping our county, let's have a vision clear. In Hillsborough's warmth, where the palm trees sway, let's pave the way for a brighter, greener day. Oh, Commissioners, here are festive plea. Like children waiting anxiously, we know you hold the key. To unlock a future where energy is fair, so let's gather round the table, all voices to share. Imagine a workshop, like a gingerbread dream, with experts and stakeholders, a collective scheme. Just take the next step. Let us make our plan clear. Please schedule a public workshop in the new year. So here's to a season both jolly and bright, to Hillsborough's leaders who I know want to do right. May you schedule a workshop, our gift beneath the tree. Twill be a prosperous year for both you and for me. Merry Christmas to all and a Happy New Year. Hope your season is filled with blessings and cheer. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Brittany Silveira, followed by Franklin Perez. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brittany Silveira. I'm with the Tampa Bay Rate Hikes Coalition. I'm here to briefly recap our efforts these past few months, which represent thousands of Hillsborough residents, and ask that our Affordable Energy Plan and Climate Action Plan be made top priority in the new year. Our county is experiencing irreparable changes that reflect the lack of action on climate change, the unaffordable energy crisis being one of them. I speak for the countless of college students that couldn't be here today, but that struggle to keep the lights on every single month due to our skyrocketing bills. We are tired, and we desperately need the county to implement a plan that protects us against the wrath of energy monopolies. We hope that the process of this Affordable Energy and Climate Action Plan can be kick-started in the new year through a workshop where industry professionals, community stakeholders, and those affected can come together to discuss our unique challenges and opportunities. This ask is not a ceiling, but a mere stepping stone in our fight for a more resilient future for all Hillsborough residents. We look forward to a 2024 that is driven by collaborative approach at a comprehensive plan that meets the very real and pressing needs of your communities. Commissioners, the prospect for profound transformation lies before us, if only you dare to embrace the potential. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Silveira. Franklin Perez, followed by Shehab Ahmed, and then Aslan Langford.
Hi, my name is Franklin Perez, and I live in both Seminole and Hillsborough Counties, Florida. If you have made any pro-Israel resolutions in the past, I ask that you rescind them all. Enough is enough. Israel is a Jewish supremacist apartheid state that has been committing ethnic cleansing and human rights abuses against Palestinians for 75-plus years, as per reports from reputable human rights organizations like Bet Zalem, Human Rights Watch, and Amnesty International. Stop supporting Israel. Stop giving it weapons. Stop giving it money and condemn it for what it is, an apartheid state. Many human rights experts refer to Gaza as an open-air concentration camp. The Israeli apartheid regime's Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu has invoked genocidal language against Palestinians in the Gaza concentration camp by referring to an ancient biblical passage in the Old Testament comparing Palestinians to the Amalekites that must all be put to death, men, women, children, babies. The Israeli apartheid regime's Defense Minister Yoav Galant has dehumanized Palestinians by referring to Palestinians in the Gaza concentration camp as "human animals." Miko Pelad, Israeli Jew, son of a famous Israeli Jew general, ex-Zionist occupation forces enforcer, and Palestinian rights activist, has stated that the Israeli army is the best terrorist group in the world. Ex-Israeli Jew Zionist occupation forces pilot Yonatan Shapira has stated that the Israeli army is a terrorist organization run by war criminals. At this point, due to scattered Zionist-only occupier settlements in the West Bank, the only fair solution to the Israel-Palestine conflict is a one-state solution where everyone, Jew and Palestinian, has equal rights. That's what is referred to as a free Palestine, from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea. All U.S. government entities should be pressuring the Israeli apartheid regime to move towards such a free Palestine. That includes the dismantling of the Gaza concentration camp. The refrain that Israel has the right to self-defense is a red herring. The real question is, does Israel have the right to use force to maintain an illegal occupation and apartheid state that commits ethnic cleansing and human rights abuses against Palestinians? The clear answer is no. Under international law, Israel has no right of self-defense when it is the oppressor and occupier, while Palestinians do have the right to physically resist and defend themselves against their oppressor and occupier, the Israeli apartheid regime. Our tax dollars should be going back to our own communities not to support unrelenting bombing in Gaza. No more money for Israel's crimes. I request that the Hillsborough County Commission introduce a resolution to stand with Palestinians around the world in demanding an end to the siege of Gaza, a permanent ceasefire, and an end to all U.S. aid to Israel, military, economic, and political. Ceasefire now, ceasefire now, ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Shehab Ahmed, followed by Aslan Langford, and then Megan Amir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. We were all once children.
Please state your name.
Shehab Ahmed.
All right, thank you.
We were all once children. We weren't born as what many of our children would say, boring adults with boring jobs. We remember playing with our friends, family reunions and dinners, and being comforted by those whom we love most, our parents and grandparents. As children, we also faced moments where we needed help, scary situations, for many of us even life-threatening. When I was six years old, my family and I went to the beach in Jacksonville. I was enjoying the water when a large wave leapt over my head and pulled me into the ocean. I was helpless, and I'm sure in your memory, you can think of a time when you were helpless as well, when you needed the assistance of someone, someone who loved you, like how our parents love us and like how we love our children, and just as we innately wish to help those who need our help as well. I believe public servants such as yourselves have bigger hearts than normal people. It takes a special kind of individual to sacrifice their lives to help and serve others. So I'm here today for the children who need our help, the children who, like we all once were helpless, the children who just wished to play with their friends and be comforted by the warmth of their parents, the children who didn't sign up for bombs to be dropped overhead, the children who are dying from basic needs such as food and water and hospitals and incubators in their homes. Children shouldn't have to be worrying about any of these things. They should be at home worrying about seeing the barber. They should be worrying about seeing the dentist. They should be worried about their crush in school. I began swallowing lots of saltwater. I didn't know how to swim at the time, and heck, I still don't float. Someone who saw me get swept away rushed to come and save me. I don't remember who he was, and perhaps I'll never know. But he saved my life. If it weren't for him, I wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't be able to speak in front of you. I wouldn't be able to be studying my PhD in education at USF. He helped me when I was helpless, just as many of us can think of a time when someone helped us when we were helpless. So I stand before you today to ask you to help those who are helpless, the innocent children who are dying by the thousands. And as we recess for the holidays to spend time with our families, I'd like to remind us that Bethlehem has canceled Christmas. Again, the birthplace of Jesus has canceled Christmas because of the ongoing conflict. And if the home of Jesus is not celebrating Christmas this year, then what does that say about us? I'd like only to echo the words of our beloved Fred Rogers when he said, "You've made this day a special day by just your being you. There's no person in the whole world like you, and I like you just the way you are." Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed. Aslan Langford, followed by Megan Amir, and then Liz Gutierrez. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Ashlyn Langford, and I live in Plant City. I was the valedictorian of Leonard High School back in 2018. I'm currently a physics student at FSU, and my family has lived in Hillsborough County for over 60 years. I'm speaking to you today as a Christian, and as we celebrate Christmas next week, it's important for us to ask, what happens to Christians born in Bethlehem today? What happens when you are born into the oldest Christian community in the entire world, bloodlines dating back to the time of Christ? What happens to the grandchildren of Jesus's disciples? They are not citizens. They are not allowed to vote. They are only allowed to drive on designated roads and walk on designated sidewalks. They can be arrested and jailed without any charge against them for an indefinite period of time, with no trial, no access to a lawyer, no right to defend themselves, and no access to family. They are not allowed to the civilian court. They must go through a military criminal court even as children. In order to leave Bethlehem to Jerusalem for any reason, they must apply for a military permit to cross the notorious apartheid wall that towers over Bethlehem. These permits are often denied. In order to cross the apartheid wall, they will go through the infamous Bethlehem Military Checkpoint even as children. Each day for work, thousands of people start lining up at 3:00 a.m. to stand in the queue for hours. Overcrowding is so bad that fainting and suffocating from lack of airflow is a daily occurrence. The pressure of the crowd pushing forward has broken people's ribs. These apartheid laws in Bethlehem are no recent project. They started over 50 years ago. I would like to make one thing very clear. This has nothing to do with Judaism, not the religion, and not the ethnicity. The Jewish people have been one of the most persecuted and oppressed peoples in every society that they have ever existed in. The Jewish people have faced some of humanity's worst horrors, including the Holocaust, but not only the Holocaust. They have faced horrible oppression in every corner of the world. Jewish people deserve their complete and utter liberation, and Jewish people deserve to live in complete and utter safety. The apartheid state of Israel is not the way. As Jewish people in Israel, in this country, in this county, and across the world have told us by the thousands in the past few weeks, the apartheid state of Israel and the Zionist project has no place in Jewish liberation. Liberation of one group can never and will never come from the oppression of another group. I call on this Board to sever all ties with Israel, including the abhorrent resolution by this Board on December 6th to give Israeli tech companies that perpetrate and profit from this apartheid $100,000 a year. I request that you instead create a resolution demanding an end to all U.S. aid to Israel and condemn the displacement and genocide of the Palestinians and call for an immediate ceasefire. I request that you condemn House Resolution 888 and 894, both of which equate anti-Zionism, which is the opposition to the apartheid state of Israel, with antisemitism, and claim that, quote, "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free," as somehow a call for a Jewish genocide. It is not. Within our lifetime, we will see a free and liberated Palestine from the river to the sea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford. All right, we've got Megan Amir, followed by Liz Gutierrez, and the last speaker is Iliana Centron. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Megan Imar, and I'm here as a resident of the Tampa Bay area with two young kids, four and six-year-old, attending Hillsborough County Schools. So I am here also on the same topic as some of my previous speakers, because I did see in a formal Commissioners' meeting that the began with a prayer for Israel, and then, secondly, there was the Board approved the $100,000 for the Israeli tech companies on an annual basis. So I do understand Tampa Bay, Tampa, needs to be an incubator for technology. We do. We have the, what is it, the Florida Center for Cybersecurity. We have the two combat and commands here. We do need to support technology innovation, but Israel is a first-world country. They don't need our money. I do understand that they are the leader in technologies against counterterrorism. As the former State Department official who ran counterterrorism programs under the Trans Sahara Counterterrorism Partnership, I do know how technology can be used and how we can help our partners in combating terrorism. Cellulbright, which is one of the leading companies that can stop locked iPhones, is based in Israel. Our Tampa City police officers probably use Cellulbright technology to unlock phones to arrest criminals and to find the evidence that they need to actually go against these criminals in court. So they do have leading technology, but again, we don't need to fund that. You do need to be careful with this technology, though, because technology can also be used to commit human rights abuses. Authoritarian regimes can use this technology actually to stay in power and to commit human rights abuses. So I just ask you to really look at what your money is actually funding. We do know that the Israeli Defense Forces do use artificial intelligence for their targeting practices in Gaza, where they have destroyed half of the buildings in Gaza. Was there a terrorist in half the buildings in Gaza? Maybe, maybe not, but that was technology that was used to do that targeting, and again, that's destroyed half the buildings. So right now, you wonder why a conflict so far away has anything to do here with the city of Tampa. But again, we're using our taxpayer money, $100,000 a year, to support Israeli technology companies. So I really ask you to do your due diligence and to do your research and make sure that you're not supporting technology companies that can create human rights abuses. And then I also ask you, in your next County Commission, that you do a prayer for the people of Palestine and the Palestinians who have died and that have suffered under this conflict. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The last two speakers, Liz Gutierrez and then Iliana Centron. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody, and happy holidays to you. I enjoyed the celebration and the honor of Chief Jones. I was a beautiful example of community leadership, and I appreciate that. I am the founder and CEO of Enterprise in Latinas, and I want to say thank you. At the last Board of County Commissioners, there was an agreement that was approved for our organization to receive funding to continue the work that we do to help residents in South County receive access to workforce development programs and services, as well as business and entrepreneurship development. We appreciate your support and your commitment to continuing our partnership with you, but there were some statements that were made that I just want to make clear about the character and nature of our organization, in the impact that we've done in this community, and also our partnership with Hillsborough County. So first of all, Enterprise in Athanas has successfully delivered aid contracts with Hillsborough County as a vendor and partner since 2019. That's about $900,000 worth of grant program. 67% of those dollars came from competitive grants that we received, that one of them in particular supported infrastructure development for our YMAMA Opportunity Center. In addition, just this past year, we closed one other contract that we had with you on September 30th, where 100% of the goals that had been set were met. And so I think it's very important for us to make clear that we did do good and make good on our commitments to the community and to our partnership with you. Secondly, our organization is an important catalyst for economic development and activity in job growth in Hillsborough County, the programs that have impacted the lives of hundreds of people. In the last three years, since every dollar invested in Enterprise in Athanas by Hillsborough County, we've been able to mobilize $4 more. So we have brought hundreds of thousands of dollars and investments to our area as a result of other foundations, both local, state, and national, and philanthropic organizations that support the work. Our commitment to seeing women do well and their children and communities do better is steadfast, and it is our hope that we can continue to count on you and your public support and your leadership as partners in this effort to make Hillsborough County a thriving place for all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last speaker is Iliana Centron.
Good morning, commissioners. Happy holidays. I am Iliana Centron, Deputy Director of Enterprise in Latinas, and I'm joining our CEO, Liz Gutierrez, today in offering public comments in response to the statements made about our organization at the December 6th meeting, which used inaccurate and incomplete information to describe our work. I want to elaborate on the fact that our organization is a catalyst for local economic activity and jobs in South Hillsborough County, and why the taxpayers' investment is a sound investment. Through our Business Development Services, over 200 entrepreneurs have received business development training in the last five years, of whom 100 have launched new businesses. We estimate that those entrepreneurs have invested at least $1.2 million in capital to launch or expand their businesses. Through investments from national and local partners, we have also facilitated $600,000 in business loans for 22 of these businesses. And this is only the beginning, because over the next three years, Enterprise in Latinas expects to launch a federally licensed community development financial institution to continue facilitating access to capital, especially for women and minority-owned businesses. This work of connecting underserved women and minority entrepreneurs to business opportunities and resources can only happen through the development of consistent partnerships. Every year, we appreciate the collaboration of the county staff, leading procurement, to share information with our entrepreneurs in South County about how to grow their businesses by opting for government contracts. In fact, last week, we held a very successful workshop and networking event at HCC South Shore in Ruskin, which attended, which attracted a diverse and very engaged group of 70 entrepreneurs to learn about how to become vendors for Hillsborough County and other public and private agencies. Similarly, we're strategically engaged with the Regional Transportation Planning Organization and the Local Technology Planning Task Force in discussing new opportunities that will reduce disparities and create jobs and economic activity in our area. Looking forward to the new year, we are excited that our organization will be expanding its reach beyond South Hillsborough County due to the investments of two national private foundations, and Enterprise in Latinas remains committed to working collaboratively with Hillsborough County to further community economic development efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Centron. All right, it closes, public comment portion of the agenda. Commemoration motion to approve the consent. So moved. Motion, Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Myers. No comments. Please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, want to induce the first time certain?
The first public hearing is Item D1. This is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the ordinance relating to a temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops. Johanna Lundgren from the County Attorney's Office will take us through this public hearing. Nobody has signed up yet for this hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. This is the first public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance that would provide for a temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops within 500 feet of any public or private elementary, middle, or secondary school for a period of 180 days following the effective date of this ordinance. No vote of the board is required this morning. This is the first public hearing, and a second public hearing will be scheduled for January 17th, 2024. You will recall that this probably sounds familiar, because in March of this year, March 1st, 2023, the board directed the scheduling of public hearings and the preparation of this ordinance in order to allow adequate time for development services staff to prepare and for the board to consider and enact the proposed regulations in the Land Development Code that would regulate the location of vaping retail shops near schools. On May 3rd, 2023, the board adopted essentially the proposed temporary moratorium ordinance on the establishment of vaping retail shops within 500 feet of schools. However, that ordinance was later nullified by Senate Bill 250, which affected local government regulations within 100 miles of Hurricane Ian's landfall. Recently, the Florida Legislature during its special session amended Senate Bill 250 to remove several counties from its affected area, including Hillsborough County. So again, this proposed ordinance will establish operative definitions and impose a moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops within 500 feet of public, private, elementary, middle, and secondary schools for a period of 180 days or until the effective date of a Land Development Code amendment that would regulate the distance of vaping retail shops from schools. This is, again, the first public hearing. I'm available if there are any questions.
All right, thank you. It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Okay, no votes required. Is that correct? Okay, next item.
Next item is Item D2. This is also a public hearing. This is regarding the Hillsborough County's state and national background on criminal history checks. And Rudy Hader Moda from the County Attorney's Office, and Chief Dockerty is here, if available as well. Item D2.
Good morning, commissioners. Rudy Hader Moda, Senior Assistant County Attorney, County Attorney's Office. This proposed ordinance authorizes state and national background checks for firefighter applicants pursuant to Chapter 125 of the Florida statutes. The ordinance codifies an existing practice at the direction of our state and federal partners, the FDLE and the FBI. This is a public hearing, and all legal and advertising requirements have been met. Chief Dockerty and I are here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? All right, commemoration motion. Second Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. Chief, do you want to say anything?
I just want to thank Rudy Hader Moda for all the hard work he did with this, so thank you.
Great. All right, no other comments. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item is 1015. This is Item B2. This is to accept the Fire Sprinkler Contract Audit Report. Melinda Jenzarly from the County Internal Auditors Office is here to present this item.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I am Melinda Jenzarly, the acting county internal auditor for the County Internal Auditors Office, and I'm here today to request the board to accept the Fire Sprinkler Contract Audit Report 2023-13. The audit's objective was to determine if Piper Fire Protection complied with the terms of the contract and to determine the maturity of the contract management activities. The audit was conducted in conformance with the international standards of the professional practice of internal auditing. Prior to today, I briefed each commissioner on the audit report's contents. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have before requesting the board to accept the audit report.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Not commemoration motion to accept the report?
Move to second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. No comments. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bonnie?
Thank you. We have a few minutes before our 10:30 time certain, so we can move to the regular agenda. The first one is Item B1, is to adopt a resolution for the Housing Finance Authority for Senior Housing in the Riverview area. Mary Helen Ferris from the County Attorney's Office will take us through B1.
Good morning, Mary Helen.
Good morning, commissioners. Mary Helen Ferris. This item is a request for the board to adopt a resolution approving the issuance by the Housing Finance Authority of Hillsborough County for multifamily revenue bonds for Zion Village Senior Housing in an aggregate face amount not to exceed $20 million. The project will include 75 apartments for elderly households meeting income LGB requirements. In addition to the bonds issued by the Housing Finance Authority, the Zion Project has a total county investment of $6.8 million. This investment consists of funding of 2.8 of County Hope Funds and 3.9 of Ship Funds. The Zion Village Project was a successful proposal under the Affordable Housing Services, RFP. On January 19th, the board approved the allocation awards for the RFP, which included Zion Village. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the HFA's funding of this, and I believe Cheryl Howell is here if there's any questions about the county's part of the funding. And I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to make some comments as we continue to develop, you know, high-res units, and this seems like a great, great project, but we continue to develop these high-res units in East and South County when we're not necessarily improving roads. We're not widening roads, we're not adding new roads, we're not using the impact fees on the communities that we're impacting. It becomes frustrating for the folks in my district, which is understandable. To be honest, it becomes frustrating with me. We have to do a study to do a study to do another study. I think we do a, if people are wandering around the desert for three days without water, we do a study for four weeks to see if they want Dasani or Aquafina. So for me, you know, it's just, I'm in a difficult spot here as the representative of East and South County, as we continue to develop and we are not continuing to make any progress on road widening or developing new roads for my folks to traverse. So anything that's a res nine and up from here on out, I'm most likely in East and South County, not going to support, and I'm going to be pulling from consent. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, I think that, I think that that's a good point. There, we seem to have a lock on how to pack and stack housing, but there does always seem to be an excuse about why we can't get roads done, and that seems to be a reoccurring theme that probably needs to be addressed. Unless we get a very reasonable plan on how we're going to develop roads and quickly, then next year, I'm going to have to start pushing for a reasonable plan on uncomfortable budget cuts, and that's probably a reality that we need to accept at this point. Has nothing to do, well, specifically for this project, again, the appalling nature of using people's property taxes to build houses, especially senior citizens that are being taxed out of being able to afford their homes and being forced to rely on a project like this. I guess I don't understand how that's not optically very clear to everyone involved in these type of projects, but I do agree that if there's going to be any more approval of any homes, it has to come after there's a clear plan on how we're going to improve the transportation network that's supposed to support them, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a very good project. As a chair of the county's affordable housing project, we look for people to come in in partnership, and when we have a mixture of funds for this particular project, and when we think about our seniors who have worked on a place to live, this is what this project is all about. And my fellow, to my fellow board members, I get this about the roads and all, but we all know, we had a referendum on the ballot last year, so I'm going to ask you all, whatever body brings back for 2024 to help champion it, and then we can get all our roads done, and we won't have to keep bringing it up. I keep telling people every time that they bring it up to me, and I said, well, we had something on the ballot in 2022, but the voters voted it down. And I must say, on yesterday, Commissioner Hagan, Cohen, and myself, we were at an affordable housing project, DeFrancisco, which was in Commissioner Hagan's district. Again, a senior project, affordable housing. So I'm going to move to make a motion to approve this agenda item.
Second. Can we get a motion to approve B1? Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp and Cohen. Commissioner Wostel?
Just every, every time it's brought up, I gotta, I've got to respond. The taxes that were mentioned were both declared illegal. The voters were intentionally misled to say yes on the first one, and it was declared again that the language that was being used was leading in that same direction, so that is not a fair, the answer cannot be for us to point to illegally language taxes at what should have been the solution. Thank you.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I have no issue with the project, and I understand affordable housing is one of the biggest issues we're facing in Hillsborough County. You know, I represent District 4, and for some reason, we're trying to pack all, it has nothing to do with affordable housing necessarily, just high-res units, apartments, townhomes. So until we start using mobility fees that are for the area that's impacted, we cannot keep developing. So I've heard my district loud and clear, and again, if these were being put up in Lutes or Carrotwood or somewhere else, I'd have no issue with it, but if we keep stacking these in East and South County without using mobility fees to improve the roads and infrastructure, we just can't keep doing it. The voters spoke very clearly that they had a big issue with that, and of course, being the representative of District 4, I'm going to listen. Thank you.
Okay, we get a motion in a second. No other comments. Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes. Yeah, I would just like to say 57% of the county voted for the one cent sales tax. That was, you know, the Supreme Court, Florida decided it was illegal, but the other sales tax was never even determined, and it only lost by 1% with a very conservative turnout, which we know was, that was actually very accurate and true. This, we desperately are in need of affordable housing. I'm very pleased that we're bringing this forward, and we desperately need to do something about our transportation. I'll agree with that for sure, and I think most of the county knows that and wanted to do something about it over and over again, and, you know, we've been thwarted from doing that. But I hope we do do something, and we do have districts that, just so the public knows, that allocate mobility fees within districts to that district. So if a mobility fee is collected, it is in the district. If there's problems with the district, maybe that should be something that Commissioner Owen could bring forward if those districts don't accurately reflect. But there are districts there that dedicate mobility fees within those areas.
Commissioner Wostel, and then we're going to vote.
Attorney back, Judge Mo declared that the language on the ballot was illegal, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure to the voters of Hillsborough County of the outright lie that was just said by one of your elected officials. That tax was declared illegal prior to it then being voted down. I want to make that crystal clear to the voters. Thank you.
Excuse me. May I just say, just for the record?
Quickly, Commissioner Kemp, when we're voting.
But an appeals court did, he just called me a liar. An appeals court did send that back and allow it to be put on, keep on the ballot for votes.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, Owen, and Wostel voted no.
Okay, next item.
Thank you. The next item is Item B3. This is to approve an agreement between Hillsborough County and the University Area CDC. Ron Barton is on vacation, and so Tom Fessler is going to present this item.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. This item is asking you to approve an agreement between Hillsborough County and the University Area CDC. The amount of the agreement is $750,000. It would be their annual funding agreement. It takes them from October 1st of 2023 through September 30, 2024. There's also a budget amendment associated with this to realign some funding and change funding sources. And with that, I'm available for questions.
All right, thanks, Tom. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. This is an item that is in my district, and I have been looking over the history of this organization. So I'm going to move to defer this agenda item B3 until the February 7th, 2024 meeting. I'm asking the county administration to bring back a report. The report should include a 10-year financial history of the county's funds from all sources and contracts given to the UA CDC, and if the UA CDC has paid any funds to the county for use of facility or any other uses. That is my motion. And then, Mr. Chair, I have a second motion following that.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Myers, second by Commissioner Wostel, so that's to defer this till February 7th, and then to also come back with a report outlining the issues that she identified.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, I was just, Commissioner Myers, this, this actual budget in Mr. Fessler's non-profit report to me is what really opened my eyes on creating more transparency, because what he uncovered, identifying all of the funding, was that just through years and years of how different processes have happened, they were budgeted through multiple different internal budgets. So it lacked that, so when a commissioner looked at the budget to see which ones getting what and deciding who needs more support, it who needs more support, it was not it was not clear how much this one institution and others were receiving, because they were receiving it through different verticals, which is which is why I've argued so much for any nonprofit receiving any money, it's all on one report. So I'm sure that that'll be demonstrated in the in the report, and I look forward to looking at it.
Right, Commissioner Myers?
Oh, no, I want to do my second motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Wostel. Please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Right, Commissioner Myers?
Yes, and in this agenda item B3, we mentioned the FY25 agreement amount would be subject to new nonprofit funding guidelines approved by the Board on June 7, 2023. So my, and it's still tied to the nonprofits. So my motion is I move to direct staff to bring back an agenda item at the February 7, 2024 Board meeting, proposing a new board policy to memorialize the nonprofits' funding protocols approved by the Board on June 7, 2023. The agenda item should also identify county programs that are subject to the new policy and the changes in funding levels for FY25 for nonprofits, for nonprofit organizations whose funding will be reduced. Now, the board flag items should be an exception from the policy. That is my motion.
All right, Bonnie, did you did you handle that?
Point of order, point of order.
Commissioner Wostel?
We got it.
I already have a passed motion that received board majority support on this. So I'm confused on how this motion is trying to now, she can't go back, right? It's already a passed motion. So I'm trying to understand the rules of order that would allow an arbitrary, hey, we're going to change an already passed policy.
Question I have, and perhaps I did not fully understand what Commissioner Myers stated in her motion, but I interpret it as essentially bringing your policy in for a landing.
That is correct, Mr. Hagan.
For lack of a better term, that's the way I interpret it. I could be wrong.
You're absolutely right.
I don't know, I don't think she was changing it. I think it was, you know, enough time, let's bring it back and approve it. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
Saying that board flags would be an alteration of the six approved policy points. I'm getting head nods.
I believe she did say that.
It was a lengthy motion. I can go back and review it, but it will take a few minutes.
Well, I don't think that'd be necessary. So Commissioner Myers, can you restate your motion or elaborate on Commissioner Wostel's concern regarding the flagged items?
Yeah, I'm not changing what he's presented on the 7th. We have not received anything. He did have something, I believe, on the last board meeting, I want to say the last, either the one before that, and it was pulled. So what I'm asking for, that we, as you said, Mr. Chair, to bring this in for a landing. Now, we want to look at the flags in the policy, but the flag items are commissioner items that we select, who we want to give the funding to. That's what the flag has been in previous years.
All right, so your specific request in the motion regarding the flagged items is what?
Is we not look at the flag items, because that's what we approved as commissioner, the flag items. But we don't have the policy in place.
Okay, Commissioner Owen?
Go ahead, I'll come in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Wise, I guess what's the procedure left on Commissioners Wostel's, you know, item? What's the procedure left? Because to me, what it sounds like is maybe a little bit of a second bite at the apple. Will there be board discussion to make amendments and changes? I guess I'm just, I'm a little confused on the procedure that's left for this. Could you allude to that?
I'm not going to speak to the flags, per se, but regarding the procedure, there was the motion, and typically, there's a policy so that staff knows how to proceed. You can see that language that we have in all those. Many of you has asked me, how is this going to affect a nonprofit next year? Because I think you're getting those same questions. And so I think the first part, anyway, was to memorialize exactly what Commissioner Wostel had presented and put that in the form of a policy. I'll give you an example. The Historic Preservation Challenge Grant Program is usually something we do an RFP, people submit applications, there's a committee that reviews. As staff, we're trying to get some guidance. Are we having that program at all? And if so, are we having it at that funding level? And so giving us that guidance and making that very specific for us will just tell us for sure how we're supposed to handle that.
Okay, because, yeah, I would think if all we're doing is trying to memorialize the agenda item would be to memorialize, well, then again, you're taking another vote on it. So for me, I'm just a little bit, a little bit baffled. You know, I'll sit back and maybe Commissioner Wostel wants to comment on that. But to me, I'm just a little worried about taking a second bite. I mean, there's a lot of things I'd like to take another bite at if we can do that. But I'm just, I'm just a little confused here with the procedure, so thank you.
All right, Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, I think I think that it's it's pretty clear. My motion was to approve a policy. It was very tight, and it passed. I would I would say that we've had this issue happen before where an unexpected minority lost a vote in a previous meeting. And Mr. Varnsdell, you can you can help me with this, but it created confusion, because they literally thought they could just keep voting until maybe they got the majority. Do you recall that meeting? Until I had to step in pretty assertively and make clear you can't just keep voting on an item because you lost. Do you recall that meeting?
Not particularly, but what you're saying is true. You can't just keep voting.
Yeah, I'll find the meeting, because it absolutely did happen. We just can't, oh, well, we didn't get the votes we want, so we're just going to keep voting until maybe we do next time. I just don't see how that is in any way in order to happen. There's no arbitrary changes to an approved policy. If someone that was one of the four people that approved the policy, to my understanding, under Robert's rules, the parliamentary can answer this at this point, because we can go pull back that meeting, and maybe we should table this issue until then, that I am pretty confident I used that I moved to approve the policy, and then I outlined exactly what that policy said. And that was to create actual accountability and tracking for a quarter billion dollars of past 10 years of funding, that the only four people that could now alter that policy is for them to go back and do a motion to, what's the word I'm looking for, to change their stance on it.
You're speaking about a motion to reconsider?
Thank you.
But that only applies at the meeting that it happened. At a subsequent meeting, you can amend something previously adopted, as long as you can, and in this case, you could.
So is the motion to amend the previously adopted policy?
Let me make a quick comment. From my perspective, I've never, I've never supported taking a, you know, a second bite, third bite of the apple. I'm against that. That being said, I think with what the policy that we, the board approved, which I was one of the commissioners that voted to approve it, I think there's significant confusion and uncertainty amongst staff, at least from the feedback I've received. In fact, I can recall, I don't recall my my exact words, but essentially, when we, right before we voted, I'm making a comment along the lines of the way that was in front of us, I can see there being exceptions, I can see there being changes to what, because we were essentially hearing the policy for the first time, because I could just foresee there being some, some issues that, issue here, issue there, that the board might have issues with. Now, in my mind, that's not taking a second bite of the apple. That's just amending or changing that's, I think, happens all the time. So I think there's a fine line there. I agree with Commissioner Wostel that we shouldn't, you know, offer a second bite of the apple. But from the initial drafts that I've seen about this policy, I think there's going to be significant conversation and probably some amendments to it. That's just what my gut tells me. So, Commissioner Cohen, you're next in the queue. But Commissioner Myers, I would just suggest that your motion, just leave it as, bring back the policy recommendation that we can memorialize on the 7th. And then at that point, if the board wants to make changes, then that's, you know, that's our right. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with your recollection, Mr. Chair, of how that unfolded. And my sense of what's being asked for here is some clarification, because there were some unanswered, I mean, I wasn't in support of it, but there were some unanswered questions about waivers and whether or not exceptions were going to be made. And my understanding was that we were going to talk through that at some point. I wanted to just comment on the issue of the flags. It seems to me that it's up to the board to approve the flags. So whatever policy is or is not in effect related to the flags, the only thing that's going to override it will be a board vote. So whether it's the policy or not the policy, commissioners can flag anything they want, and then the board can vote it up or down. And if people don't like the flag, they can they can vote against it. So I don't think we need to get hung up on that, because it'll it'll play itself out when we have that reconciliation meeting in July.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'd just like to support your statements, Commissioner Hagan. That meeting where this was presented, the board itself, and it wasn't on the agenda, even given a copy of what was proposed, much less any, you know, report about it, some further clarification, and it was extraordinarily dense. I mean, I couldn't even get it straight at all at the time. I did vote against it. A copy was given at the beginning of the meeting to the county attorney, that was it. The rest of the board didn't have copies. I don't know if some board member somehow knew what was going to happen, but it was a very complicated, with many steps. And at the time, I just thought we should take maybe two of the steps and further review how this would go down. You just, I mean, if we if we did policy that way, it would it would never work. And the staff does need clarification, and everyone needs clarification, all these, all these not-for-profits in the county about how this will go on. And it's also the right of the board to amend the policy in the future, should now, in review, looking at it, understanding more about how it can be implemented, that that maybe it wasn't this or that part of it isn't something that we want to continue with, so that we have that option. But I would concur with also Commissioner Hagan with your analysis of that. And I think we will need probably more than February 7th as we look forward, because this was a very big, very big bite at the apple, and it was very unclear how this would be implemented. And so I think we owe it to staff, the community, the county, nonprofits, everyone to to review this. And I think it's Commissioner Myers, thank you for bringing it forward. I think we need to do this.
All right, Commissioner Owen, and then Myers, and then I'm going to ask that we vote, because the reality is, this wasn't on our agenda, and I don't want to get bogged down on a non-agenda item.
Yeah, and listening to Commissioner Kemp there makes me really nervous about supporting this. And I mean, wouldn't, and I'll ask you, Mr. Chairman, this, wouldn't the appropriate steps be, from what I'm hearing is, there just needs to be a lot of clarification from staff, wouldn't the best thing be a future item for them to bring back a report stating any uncertainties that they have with the policy so that we can look at it, rather than, you know, if you're going to, if we want to make a motion to amend, then make a motion to amend, call it what it is, so that we can vote on it appropriately. But wouldn't the proper procedure be not an actual motion, but this as a future item? That's kind of what I'm seeing, but I don't know. Thank you.
Well, before Commissioner Myers speaks, I'll just, I'll address your question. I personally, I don't see, if Commissioner Myers' motion is just bring this back so we can memorialize it, I don't, I don't see any harm in that. The only direction or real input that I've given staff throughout this process is, you might want to consider bringing back options just to try and make that discussion, whenever we have it, a little less painful. But that's essentially the only direction or input that I've given. But I can just tell you, I don't know about everyone else's briefings, staff, particularly Tom Fessler's, worked very hard on this, but it's challenging for them. And they're not 100% clear on certain things. So I just said, hey, you might want to bring back some options that we can consider. That's the only real direction that I've given. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, and this is going to be painless. It's just to memorialize, asking to bring back the policy, that's all. I'm not changing, Commissioner Wise, what you presented on June 7th at all, not at all.
Okay, so the motion by Commissioner Myers, just to bring back February 7, the policy so we can memorialize it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner. Cohen, no other comments, please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, Owen, and Wostel voted no.
Bonnie, you have 10:30?
10:30. Our first item is item B8. This, excuse me, sorry, this was a future issue item, thank you. And and then the board did ask for us to come back with the land use restriction agreement related to the Live Local Act, and Adam Gormley is going to take us through this item.
Good morning, Adam.
Good morning, Commissioner. It's Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item B8 is a request for the board to approve the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions Land Use Restriction Agreement, referred to as LURA, to support or to implement projects developing under the Live Local Act, while also asking that the board authorize the county administrator or her designee to execute LURA's associated with Live Local projects, and lastly, to approve the Live Local Act administrative approval and LURA process. The short, we've spoken about the Live Local Act previously. What it does is it allows development of certain affordable housing projects on land that is zoned for commercial, industrial, or mixed uses. This is done notwithstanding our comprehensive plan or zoning restrictions, it essentially preempts that. What the LURA would do is it would establish affordability requirements, verification, monitoring, and reporting of income of residents in Live Local projects, and provide for enforcement mechanisms for for Live Local projects. The administrative approval process is something that we've developed as our typical development process would entail looking at the zoning and the comprehensive plan designation to determine if the uses were permitted. On Live Local, we don't, it's a different dynamic, so we were proposing to establish a Live Local verification process that would upfront review the zoning of the land that's proposed for Live Local projects, the number of units that are proposed, and memorialize whether that is something that could be supported under Live Local, for those projects to get an affirmative verification. That information will be used to draft the LURA. We will require that the owner have an executed LURA in place before they start the development process. And at the end of the development process, the LURA would be executed by the by the county and recorded and be binding on the property. I'm available for any questions or any additional detail that the board may desire at this point.
All right, thank you. It's my understanding this item is one that we're required to make as a result of the legislative action, and then I know in our next item, Commissioner Owen is going to go into a little bit more detail on some other options. So can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And thank you. The next item is item F4. This is Commissioner Owen's item relating to Live Local. Adam is still here. Commissioner Owen, if there are any questions, but we wanted to have these two items be heard together.
All right, Commissioner Owen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know the commissioners have already looked at this, and basically, it stands for the proposition, the first part, A, has to do with our land development code, which is obviously not caught up with Live Local, because a lot of the things in the Live Local will violate our land development code, like setbacks and things like that. So what this will do is it will allow staff to roll So what this will do is, it will allow staff to roll up their sleeves and catch up with our land development code. And the second portion is, Pasco County has kind of led the way with, I think, some legal action requirements for the Live Local Act or for people submitting applications. So it's just advising staff to come back to us with a report on what Pasco County Board is doing. So move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Wostol, and I'll just take, Commissioner, I appreciate your, your work on this. No comments, please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Hey, Bonnie?
Thank you. We can go back to the regular agenda to Item B4. This is to approve a change order relating to our South County, South County Advanced Water Treatment Facility. George Cassidy is here to present this item.
Good morning, George.
Good morning, Commissioners. George Cassidy, Public Utilities. Item B4, we're asking that you approve a change order, number one, to the agreement with Wharton Smith for the expansion of our South County Waste Water Treatment Plant. This project is, is necessary because of the ongoing demand in South County, the growth of South County, and it really was initiated as a bridge project until our new One Water Campus is built out in the landfill area. So in this particular change order, we're asking that you extend the contract by 365 days for both substantial and final completion, and we're going to increase the contract amount by $29,700,000. That's necessary because we are growing the, the size of the project. It started off as an 11 million, 11 million gallon expansion. We're just going to 13 million gallons. We needed additional capacity, and so that additional funding is going to be needed to do that additional size. We're also asking that you approve a fiscal, a fiscal year 24 budget amendment to reallocate some funds within the, within the Water Resources Capital Improvement Program of the $29,700,000, and coming primarily from two letters of credit that the department holds. We also want to point out that at the time of the award, the design builder committed to a 12% MBE, DBE contract. This additional funding, almost $30 million funding, falls underneath that 12% requirement. So the aggregate of the contract will still have the 12% requirement by the contractor. The Economic Development Department has reviewed this and supports this change. The funding exists within the capital program. Staff recommends approval.
I thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. You know, this obviously highly impacts my district. I know Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Wostol, you all serve on the board there, and I appreciate all your work on that. Just for the public purposes, would you mind, I know you were clarifying the uptick in, in the cost, basically, and when I did my briefing with you, could you just real briefly, for public purposes, just clarify what else besides going to 13, the 13 gallons, that I know that we have clarifiers that we have to add, there's new pumps that, could you just clarify that real quick and briefly?
Absolutely, Commissioner. So, so when we had the 11 million gallon per day treatment capacity program, you know, we might have added one clarifier, we had one filter that needed to be installed, a couple of pumps here, there. It's a pretty large effort to increase capacity within an existing facility, and so going to 13, it's, it's double and triple those things that we had originally anticipated. So it's more tankage, it's more pumps, more electrical components. All of those are very expensive, and as much as we would have liked to have gone to 11 and had the new water campus available to us sooner, we're just living with, you know, some extended time periods right now.
Yep, I know. We're doing this because of the development, water pressure issues, and high reses out in South County, so I appreciate all your hard work on this, and I'll move for approval.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers. See anyone in the queue? Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
B5?
Thank you. Item B5 will be presented by Lauren Storch. Lauren is with Public Utilities as well, and she's going to present Items B5 and B6, and these are a couple of good news items.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lauren Storch, Grants Program Manager for the Water Resources Department. Item B5 is to accept and appropriate $5 million in grant funding for the Palm River Utility Expansion Project. This was a competitive grant opportunity awarded by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The funds are going to be used to construct the central sewer infrastructure to facilitate the conversion of septic systems for hundreds of residents in the Palm River area. These improvements not only help to ensure that residents are provided with reliable and efficient wastewater service, but they also contribute in significant ways to the environment. The Water Resources Department will utilize the American Rescue Plan Act funds to satisfy the required match component for the grant. We want to thank you for your continued support of these efforts and for other similar initiatives aimed toward improving water and wastewater service countywide. Staff recommends approval, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Hallelujah. I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Actually, Lauren's going to do B6 and B7, so.
Okay.
Continue on B6.
Thank you. More good news, this item reads almost identical to the previous. Item B6 is to accept and appropriate $13 million in grant funding for the Gibsonton Area Septic to Sewer Conversion Project. This was also a competitive grant opportunity awarded by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The funds are going to be similarly used for constructing the central sewer infrastructure to facilitate the conversion of the septic systems within the Gibsonton area for those residents. These improvements, again, help to ensure residents have reliable and efficient wastewater service in addition to the, the significant environmental benefits that, that it provides. The Water Resources Department will also utilize American Rescue Plan Act funds for the grant, excuse me, the required match for this grant as well, and, and thank you again, and staff recommends approval. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Commissioner Kemp? Yes. Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay. B7?
Thank you, although Commissioner Owen forgot to say hallelujah. All right, the next item is Item B7. This is the moving of some American Rescue Plan dollars, and Lauren will continue with this item.
Thank you. Item B7 is to adopt a resolution to add a new project to the adopted fiscal year 24 to fiscal year 29 Capital Improvement Program. The project is the countywide water and wastewater extensions, and it will enable the Water Resources Department to develop and implement a program to help residents throughout the county get connected to county water and sewer services. The project will be funded through the realignment of American Rescue Plan Act funds from two other projects, the University Area Septic to Sewer Program and the Palm River Utility Expansion Project. A primary reason for the realignment of these funds is to ensure that they, that the funds are encumbered and spent by the federally imposed deadlines, which are coming up in 2024 and 2026, respectively. There is approximately $19 million in external funding available in the Palm River Utility Expansion Project budget. Staff recommends approval, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. No comment, or Commissioner Kemp? Commissioner Kemp, do you want to comment? You're on mute.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say that when I was an aide to now Congresswoman Kathy Castor, when she was a county commissioner, and I was an aide at the county commission, that we were working at that time on the Palm River Utility Extension, that that was a problem then, so I am, or expansion. I'm really so pleased, because this is part of the effort that we are, that we're having to bring urban services, sewer and wastewater, to some of the 25,000, I think, are, it might even have, it might even be more, 26,000, I think, within the urban service area that don't have those services. And I really wanted to, I'm, I know that this was something that was pushed by President Biden, I know that this is something that Congresswoman Castor supported and understands the importance of, and I'm really happy to see this being spent in our communities. It's going to be a lot of economic development, a lot of help for people.
All right, this is also something that Commissioner Miller, I think, fought hard for as well. We have a motion, a second. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item.
And our next item is Item F1, and Luann Finley will take us through the appointment for Commission on Human Trafficking. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda already sits on this board, but this is for an alternate, I believe.
Yes, and I'm willing to serve as an alternate.
Commissioner Owen? All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Cohen.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, for an alternate on Commission on Human Trafficking. No one else wants to serve? Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, do we need to confirm this like the other ones, or are we good? We're good? All right, good job, Luann.
You're welcome.
Next item.
The last item is Item F2. This is Commissioner Myers' item regarding a sponsorship opportunity.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes, this is a simple repeat of last year with the United Bikers, I'm sorry, the Tampa Bay Caribbean Carnival that's going to be held up at Perry Harvey Park, and we're approving for $50,000, so I move for approval.
Got a motion, Commissioner Myers. A second, second Commissioner Cohen. No comments, please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp? Commissioner?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Wostol voted no.
All right, future issues, is that left?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any future issues by board members? Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and Happy New Year, everybody, because this is the, I guess, the end of it for us for 2023. I just want to let the board know that as a commissioner item in our January 17th meeting, I am going to place on the agenda a discussion of holding an Affordable Energy Plan Public Workshop. We've had a lot of public comment over the past year asking us to do this. I recognize, and I think we all recognize, that the Public Service Commission sets rates, but there is a lot we can talk about related to conservation efforts, things we can do to become more energy efficient, and I look forward to fleshing that out and then seeing if the board is interested in having that workshop in the new year.
Okay, Bonnie, you're good with that? Yep. Any other items? If not, I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you next year.